Good evening, welcome to Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And with that, roll call.
Good evening, we'll start with Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Damon.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
And Acting Chair Holt.
Here.
Thank you.
And Chair Hernandez is absent this evening. So moving on to minutes, we have our draft minutes from September 11th, 2018. This is going to be a little odd and we're going to make two motions on this because we had two different sets of planning commissioners here for the two different items. So the first item of minutes were for the study session and that would need to be a motion by Commissioner Damon and Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Benjamin and myself are absent. Who wants to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of September 11th.
And I.
Study session item.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I also move that we approve the second part of the minutes from September 11th.
And I would second that. And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Very good.
To the Chair, the record show I've recused on this vote.
Commissioner Benjamin recused. Okay, and so with that, are we ready to move into public comment? I do not have any cards for general public comment. If there's anybody who wishes to speak on any items not on the agenda, now would be your time. Not seeing any, we can close the public comment period. And just mention if there is anybody who does wish to speak on one item on the agenda tonight, please fill out one of the green speaker cards and provide to myself or Joe and we could get that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steph.
Thank you. The item before you tonight is a proposal for an amendment being brought forward by the city for establishing the Stoloski Gonzales Plan Development District, which is an amendment to the city's local coastal land use plan. That's the policy portion of the local coastal program. We have a brief presentation. You've had two previous meetings regarding this, so we'll try to skip through the background fairly quickly, but we'll cover that again and then review the proposed amendment and recommendation. And of course, this is a public hearing. This item was duly noticed in the Half Moon Bay Review. This property, that is the subject of the item, was posted in multiple locations according to Coastal Commission requirements for land use amendments and we also sent out notifications to property owners. So to dig in here, this all was initiated way back in 2010 when there was an application for a coastal development permit, use permit, tentative parcel map, and a planned development plan to subdivide a two-acre parcel known as the Stoloski Gonzales parcel into a four-lot subdivision at the north end of what is currently the Surf Beach Dunes Beach PD and immediately south of Miramar. In 2011, the Planning Commission recommended approval to cancel. City Council approved the proposal. An appeal to the Coastal Commission was brought forward in 2014 and the Commission found no substantive issue, which confirmed the city's approvals of all of those previously listed entitlements. In 2015, the final map was approved. And we just, before digging into the rest of it, we want to focus on what was actually approved back then. And this graphic is a colored up version of the final parcel map. And the green area, the highlighted area, is the original Stoloski Gonzales parcel and you can see the four lots that I added the numbering to, so you can see those. And the cul-de-sacs that are terminating into two locations at Champs-Elysees and Pullman are the access points. So you can note that that is the full scope of what we're looking at tonight, this final subdivision map area that was already approved by the city. The other thing that was approved with the map was this planned development plan, which are these planned development standards. This is one of the attachments to your staff report. These standards are, it's a one-page document, it's similar to some of the other sets of standards that we have for other plan developments, such as the Matucci PD and a few others. They list basic zoning components, permitted uses, prohibited uses, the standards according to setbacks and heights and the like, as well as an open space requirement, because there is a 20% open space requirement in planned developments in Half Moon Bay. Subsequent to the approvals, there was a challenge to the approval that resulted in a settlement agreement, a three-party settlement agreement between a neighbor and the developer and the city. And so we also want to acknowledge that and highlight a couple components of that settlement agreement. The agreement is also an attachment to your staff report. Staff considers the agreement to be, at this point, because it was approved in that manner and the city has signed on to it as really part of the development standards for this map. The settlement agreement, so in the planned unit development standards make references to a culvert. The settlement agreement actually eliminates the culvert from the plans. The agreement also specifies a particular routing for the sewer line, which is already installed at this point in time. And it also defined a further restriction area, which is highlighted in green. It's the westernmost parcel and that restriction area is specified for no development for 10 years from the signing of the agreement. You'll note that that further restriction area is outside of the building envelope that is defined for that parcel, so there's actually quite a bit of land there that is not really set up for significant development. It also, the agreement also highlighted requirements for tree protections and replacements, substantially similar to the city's ordinance with regards to heritage tree protections. They were a little more specific about replacing like species for like. And we do need to follow through and continue to inspect the property over time because some of the trees may have been damaged during the sewer line placements. But that is not a subject of, that detail is not before you tonight, that would be more in line with projects, development coming forward in this area. Now, the next thing that happened after the settlement agreement was we saw you in August. We got two applications. One came in late last year and the next one came in January, separate applications for new homes on the two of the four previously approved subdivided parcels. Both of those applications were ready for your consideration in August and you saw them on August 14th. And you held public hearings for both of those items. And the feedback and input that we received was, we need to continue them to a date uncertain because there was concern about not being able to make findings that the proposal was consistent with all of the land use plan policies. And specifically that the Surf Beach Dunes Beach PD area, which this lot would be situated in, requires that a specific plan be prepared for the entire planned development area and that had not occurred. There were a number of other policies that were notable to this, that were highlighted in your staff report when we came back to you on August 28th. You asked for a history of what had happened, an analysis of it, and a recommendation. And that report is pretty in-depth. And the recommended approach that we brought to you was, this can be rectified with an amendment to the land use plan to confirm the planned development status of the Stoloski Gonzales subdivision area, which was part of the findings that the city had made in approving the project and in their action, the Coastal Commission confirming that. So we worked with the record as it had been presented previously. So moving on to the proposed land use amendment, you saw this graphic on August 28th. The red boundary is the current Surf Beach Dunes Beach Plan Development District area and the green triangle, you already saw that in the subdivision, that is the proposed new Stoloski Gonzales Plan Development District and that would be removed from the Surf Beach Dunes Beach PD in this proposal. So let's step through a couple of the key points of what's being proposed. So first of all, the proposed planned development district would be coterminous with the subdivided parcel that has already been approved by the city. And it's not any bigger than that, it doesn't step into any other areas. And it would be completely severed from Surf Beach Dunes Beach PD. Next, it would simply bring in the approvals that we already reviewed and that are attached to your staff report, specifically the approved final map and the planned development, planned unit development, development standards, and also the settlement agreement. You'll note in the proposed language, there are only three policies proposed for this new PD and they cite those three items. Those are the two entitlements plus the settlement agreement. So nothing beyond the scope of what the city has already been approving and was confirmed by the Coastal Commission. So next, we know that this is a concern. What would be the effect on the Surf Beach Dunes Beach Plan Development Area? And specifically, you'll see in your, the attachment with the language, the modification to it is minimal. It's just to remove the area of the Stoloski Gonzales PD area in terms of acreage, so two acres are taken out of the total. And the northern boundary of the PD area is re-described as not going all the way up to Miramar. Nothing else has changed, all the rest of the narrative, all of the policies are intact. And most significantly, the requirement for a specific plan to cover the entire PD would remain in place. And you would no longer have this sense of a conflict that resulted in the previous review process. So we want to sum up again, I know I've said a few of these things already, but we got quite a few comments at the initiation hearing and I really think it's important to belabor this a little bit so that folks understand the scope of what's before the Planning Commission. The scope is, this covers only the four lots that are part of the Stoloski Gonzales subdivision, already approved. And those development standards that we've made reference to, they're conservative, they're substantially similar to development standards that are in the city's residential zones. The setbacks are similar. In fact, the defined building envelopes on the parcel map means that this is actually more restrictive than the city's zoning code. The requirement for 20% of the area to be in open space is more restrictive than the city zoning code. There's a number of places where that occurs. There's also a footprint limitation, which was important because these are really large lots in the city. City zoning code can allow up to 50% lot coverage on a, most of our residential lots for one-story development, which is not reasonable on big lots like these. So it took that into account. It also does not admire the integrity of the Surf Beach Dunes Beach PD. This item before you in no way grants approval or amends the requirements that are in place for that PD. This is a conservative approach, making this amendment to the land use plan. The Coastal Commission's confirmation of the city's approval offers the city a finding that we could have used, which is what we recommended to you back in August 14th. But the Planning Commission wanted to be abundantly cautious to make sure we weren't setting a precedent and did not want to take up consideration of development where there could be a situation where not all of the local coastal land use plan policies could be conformed to. So this is taking a lot of care to do this, it's taking quite a bit of extra time. And we have been working hard to get this to an approach that works for what the Commission asked for and is also suited to what the city already committed to in terms of those entitlements. So tonight, we are recommending that you approve the resolution, which will recommend this on, to the city council. And we are happy to answer Planning Commission clarifying questions. This is, again, a public hearing, so you will be taking public hearing comments. And I do want to note, as of 5:00 PM today, we had no written comments on this item. We got a couple calls, people wanted to understand it, but we did not receive anything in writing. Following your action, this will be brought to the city council. We have a tentative date of October 18th, but it depends on what happens here. Following city council's action, this would need to go to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission is the final say on amendments to the local coastal land use plan. So that is where we are in this process. And one more note, Chair Hernandez really wanted to be here tonight. He could not call in, he wasn't able to do that, so he submitted some written comments, he reviewed the packet over the weekend, and I just wanted to make sure that you received those. We, I believe, provided copies also out on the table in case anyone wanted to read what the Chair had said. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any clarifying questions from the Commission?
I do have one. If we approve this, this does not approve the two houses that we had before us four weeks ago. They'll have to come back and we'll have to approve the architectural review and everything else associated with it, right?
That's right. Those are both continued to a date uncertain, they will have to be re-noticed and brought back to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Since this goes forward to the Coastal Commission, was there any kind of communication or review? Our legal staff did a great job of, and your staff, of kind of simplifying and clarifying all this for us. Was there also kind of discussions with them about that?
All right. Yes, certainly, there were discussions and we discussed the scope of this proposed amendment and we reviewed it in a high level of detail with them to make sure that they were on the same page with what was appropriate for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no questions for me. So with that, we can go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do have two speaker cards here. So first speaker, Carrie Burke. Is your, is it green?
Okay. Good evening, Acting Chairman Holt, members of Commission, staff and the public. I'm Carrie Burke, here on behalf of Stoloski Gonzales and really appreciate all that staff has done and including our planning manager and our deputy city attorney. They really worked very hard on finding an elegant solution to this situation. They did vet this with the Coastal Commission. We know it took a lot of extra time that they weren't planning on, but we support the staff's recommendation and really on behalf of the Stoloski Gonzales families and myself, we just really thank you for all this hard work and we think that this is a good way to proceed and hope it can go forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Joe Farrell.
Would you just hold it all? Okay. If I just speak loud? Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Farrell and my wife and I live at 2805 Alameda Avenue, which is the property that directly faces the, a portion of the parcel that is developed by Mark. And I would say that we have been very supportive of Mark in his efforts in the past few years to be able to do this. But there's been a couple things, one of which is, as we have now been facing the story polls that are in front of us, it's significantly different, it probably cuts out 80%, 90% of our view. And the property that's on there that's owned by John Vitovich for the proposed building is just, it's immense. So, but specifically for this, for this topic, we are asking that you consider the fact in the PUD about separating this, that the Dunes Beach portion is being, is about to be proposed by the same, by the property owner, John Vitovich, that owns this house right next to the land. And would ask that it be at least looked into, is there potentially a conflict here by separating the two units? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Joe Chamberlain. And just to clarify, the microphone, while we can hear folks in the room here is really for the benefit of our audience at home on TV, so.
The light is green.
Go for it, you're a pro.
We're going for it, thank you. Joe Chamberlain, Executive Director of the Coastside Land Trust, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Hello, Mark, nice to see you, as always. I'm speaking in support of the staff recommendation this evening and I believe that the General Plan Advisory Committee, of which I was a member, I still am a member, even though we're no longer meeting or we currently are not meeting, I believe that this would be in conformity with the wishes of that group, but I cannot speak for the entire group. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got no other speaker cards, this is your last opportunity to speak on this item. Seeing nobody else jumping up, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any comments, questions, otherwise from Steph or from the Planning Commission?
To the Chair. So I appreciate the effort that staff made to respond to the comments that the Planning Commission brought to the table about the need to make this conform. And I appreciate the public's concern about this planned unit development and planned development district with respect to the zoning ordinance and the local coastal program. And it represents one of those difficult situations that you find yourself in when you're a planning commissioner, that you may not love the project that's proposed. Sometimes you love a project, but it's not consistent with the plans, you can't approve it. Other times, you may not like it, but it's consistent with the plan and you need to respect the plan. I expressed my concerns about the project back in 2010. We followed a certain process, that process worked out to a certain conclusion. And I think we have a responsibility to respect the outcome of that conclusion tonight. That's why I will respect and support the resolution. I think it's the very best outcome that we have based on the circumstances we're in today. I appreciate the question that Speaker mentioned with respect to ownership of multiple lots in the planned development district. And I certainly would be interested in hearing staff's perspective on that. I can't see a direct basis for an argument of a conflict. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to defer to our lawyers and ask that when other comments have come in that our city attorney respond to that question. But my intuition is that the answer is likely not to be a conflict, but I appreciate that you raised it. So those are my thoughts.
Great, other comments from the Commissioner?
I too want to commend staff in taking this conservative approach in terms of ensuring that our i's are dotted and t's are crossed and that there's no issue that this property is separate and distinct from the Surfers Dunes Beach. So that I think the four houses, when and if they come to us, will have no, I guess, precedent per se on anything we do after that. So I, you know, appreciate the work and I too would be for this amendment and just hopefully it goes forward without a hitch. So that's my comment.
I agree with our Chair Hernandez and his comments and also the other Commissioners of the job the staff and our legal counsel have done to simplify a kind of dicey kind of situation here and very supportive of what you've. of situation here, and very supportive of what you've bringing forward.
Great. Thank you. I concur with my fellow commissioners. I think this was a good and necessary, and perhaps it took a little bit extra time, but a good cleanup project to make sure that we have a clean approval and that, and I hope the applicants can appreciate that this may make things easier as we move forward. So, certainly not a commentary on the specific housing plans that we had seen before. Those plans will come back. Certainly, the commission will be considering the architectural review of those, so that will be, you know, that will be, continue to be discussed. But as far as this particular action, I am also in support of it. And just review, read real quick for the folks who haven't necessarily seen Commissioner Hernandez's comments, just, I guess, the punchline on his was, "After careful consideration, I fully support the resolution to recommend to the city council the amendment for, to establish the Stalaski Gonzales Planned Development District." So, with that, I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Through the chair. Before that, I'd like to give the city attorney a chance to respond to the public's question about the conflict, possibility of a conflict.
Yeah, so, as I understand the question, it was whether there was a potential conflict, given that one of the property owners also may be submitting a development application for the Surf Dunes Surf Beach project, which this action considers severing off the Stalaski Gonzales PD from. There is no conflict there. The conflict of interest laws apply to public officials and actions that they take, not to the applicants themselves. And the city can undergo legislative actions during the pendency of other applications.
I move that we, the Planning Commission, recommend to city council, that the city council approve an amendment to the Half Moon Bay Local Coastal Program to establish the Stalaski Gonzales Planned Development District, shown in Attachment 1 and Exhibit A.
Motion second?
Second.
Very good. Do we want to do a roll call vote? Yes, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Holt?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, our one public hearing item is complete, so we can move on to the director's report.
Thank you. This is going to take a few minutes, so if you want to clear the room, you can. We have a lot coming your way, and I'd like to give you a forecast that comes almost to the end of the year, just so that you know what's ahead. Your next meeting will be October 9th. At that session, we're planning to bring the Barn Workshop Historic Modification, that's the structure behind the jail. This is a city-owned property that our local historic society is operating, and they're looking to expand a museum into the building behind it. And this will be a public hearing item with a coastal development permit. And there had been a significant amount of historic research on the structure, so that'll be an interesting item for you. There'll also be at least one and possibly two study sessions. The Hyatt project is going to come back to you in a study session focused on design. The project applicant has brought onboard an architecture firm who has prepared a completely new package for this property, and we look forward to bringing that your way. We also may have, yeah, October 9th, your very next meeting. Yeah. And we will, we will send notification out through our email. We do have an email list of folks who are interested in that project. Bike Works over on Kelly is also working on adding a building to their property, and we would like you to see that in a study session format as well before they do a whole lot more with their architecture. There's some interesting site planning challenges that we'd like you to take a look at with them. Again, on October 23rd, we're going to have a special meeting where we're having a workshop. It will be our second community conversation about housing. The first one that we had was July 15th with about 90 attendees. We're eager for your attendance at the one coming up. We will have a planning firm with some architectural background presenting a range of diverse housing types, and I think it's going to be a really interesting meeting. This is based on community interest from the first meeting, things that really resonated in the conversations that were held. October 30th is a fifth Tuesday, and I'm just curious, and we'll send you an email. And so far, that we have so much activity, and I know you're busy, but we're going to wonder if maybe you could meet an extra time in October. And it's also the day before Halloween, so it might be awful, but we just.
Can I come in costume?
You can? You can. I'd do it if you do it. Okay. All right, so we'll follow up tomorrow, so you can take a look. And it's tentative right now, we just, we want to know your ability to do that. November 13th, we have at least one, possibly two items that both have initial studies and mitigated negative declarations. One is for Mariners Church. It's an addition to Mariners Church, and the other is a new house at 698 Terrace. Mariners Church requires a 30-day notification, so notification's already gone out for this. And Terrace, not so, not such a long lead time, but both of those documents are completed well in advance of when your packet would need to go out. So, what we plan to do is provide them to you right after your October 9th meeting, so you have a little extra time to wade through those in advance of your packet for November November 27th, we are hoping to have the Parks Master Plan Initial Study, Mitigated Negative Declaration come your way. The Parks Master Plan, as you know, has been vetted high and low through the Parks and Rec Commission, through the Planning Commission. City Council nodded their approval in advance of us working on the sequoia coverage for it, and we want to get that to you as soon as possible.
If I could, is that, does that also include the Trails Master Plan?
No, a bike pad will come, and we separated them, and there's a whole bunch of reasons why. Okay. So, you'll, you get to take them in two helpings. And then your last meeting of the year would be December 11th, and right now, I'm trying to save that for local coastal land use plan chapter discussions. So, we're carving that one out. Let's move on. Community Development Director decisions on October 3rd, I'll be looking at an addition on, for a house on Redondo Beach Road. On October 17th, we're going to look at a new house proposed on Johnston Street. We are also preparing to issue a coastal development permit exemption and sequoia exemption for a goat grazing fire suppression plan on the SAM property off of Quinia Country Road. And city council, October 2nd, the ADU second reading had to get bumped forward. We didn't have a quorum on September 18th, so the second reading, I believe, will go forward on October 2nd. And then from there, that will go to the coastal commission. Again, we'll keep you posted on that. You worked very hard on that. Also on October 2nd was city council, the Highway 1 South Gateway Landscaping and Signage that you saw at your last meeting. We're going to check in with council just to make sure that we don't get ahead of them. You gave us a lot of good input, and we just want to show them how far we are. And assuming that they are comfortable with it, the landscape architect will continue with design development based on your input, and we'll bring that back to you when it's ready to go. And a few other things that are going on, and you probably, some of you have seen us out and about doing these things. On September 17th, we kicked off the Poplar Gateways Master Plan for that park area, the Bluff Top Park. The hallmark of that plan is going to be bluff top protection and adaptation of the coastal trail for retreating it back. On September 20th, the city just had its first ever very large-scale end-of-summer concert at Carter Park. I heard it was a raging success, and people had a great time. The cool thing about that, though, was Carter Park is a CIP project who upgrade that park, and schematics were vetted during the event, so people could be in the park and look at what it might improve into for performance space and other unstructured kinds of spaces, thinking of summer camps, picnic areas, things like that. Tomorrow night, I'm going to Main Street Park to get some more input about Poplar Gateways, and I'll also be going there with the project applicant for the Hyatt. You had requested that we reach out to the neighbors in particular to get some input from the Latino neighborhood there, and they're right across the street from the park, and we've been invited to come and just get some feedback. So, when you see this on October 9th, we'll let you know how that meeting went. And then finally, October 24th, the Parks and Rec Commission will get detailed updates on Poplar Gateways and Carter Park, which are both going to need coastal development permits and come through you. So, we want, we just want to keep you abreast of where they are in the planning process. And there's more stuff, but I think that's all I can keep track of. Okay, so, thank you.
Sounds like a busy rest of the year.
Question? So, yeah, so for the calendar challenged among us, where is Thanksgiving in relation to the November 27th meeting? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments on that? Can we move forward into Planning Commission Communications? Anybody have any communications to report? Seeing none, I have none. So with that, we can consider a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second?
Okay, one favor. Aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Long time no see. How are you?